This is not my one. I should say forty-five minutes, forty-five days. I thought I saved it.
Good evening. It is six oh one on Tuesday, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. I'd like to call our council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you take the roll, please?
Brenham?
Present.
Pugh?
Here.
McBratton. Little?
Here.
Livingston?
Yeah.
Tereshia? Weaver?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Aline?
Here.
Mackey? English?
Present.
Newton. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Uh, next is our invocation. Vice Chair Pugh, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to ask the Honorable Cheryl English if she doesn't mind stepping in for me for the invocation.
Let us go before. Father, it's in the precious name of our Savior Jesus that we come to. Thanking you, Lord, for another day. Thanking you for health, for strength. Thanking you for the activity of our limbs. And God, we just recognize your deity, your awesomeness, your authority. God, as we carry out the business of Richland County, we ask you to be with us, give us wisdom, knowledge, understanding, revelation, and discernment for all the things you place our hands to. We ask you to cover this county, oh God. Thank you for covering our residents. Thank you for this staff, God, as they carry out the mandates that are set before them. God, we just need your wisdom. We thank you for who you are. We thank you for your strength, your guidance. We thank you, Lord, for all that you do for us on a daily basis. We lift you up. We recognize that there is none greater than you, and without you, we are nothing. So, Lord, as we just continue to praise you and lift you up, we thank you for the direction and the guidance that you so give us each and every day. Father, these are all blessings we ask and thanks we give in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, ma'am. If you can, will you please stand and join me for the pleasure of allegiance?
United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next is item four, presentation of resolutions. Four A is a resolution recognizing Alphita W. Tyndall's forty-five years of service to Richland County. I'll entertain a motion on this resolution.
Second.
Motion is second for Madam Clerk.
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Resolution recognizing Alphita Walters Tyndall, forty-five years of service and retirement. Whereas Alphita Walters Tyndall has dedicated over four decades of exemplary service to Richland County, beginning her career on June sixteenth, nineteen eighty, as a clerk too with the Public Works Road Maintenance Department. And throughout her tenure, she played a vital role in shaping Richland County's addressing road naming system, ensuring efficiency, accuracy, and accessibility for residents. Ms. Tyndall broke barriers as the first black female supervisor at Richland County Public Works, and later as the first black female chairperson of the Richland County Grievance Board. Ms. Tyndall was instrumental in the implementation of the countywide Enhanced 911 Program, serving as E-911 Coordinator in leading efforts to standardize addressing protocols to enhance emergency response. Her dedication and contributions earned her numerous accolades, including the Two Thousand Census Trophy for her role in Richland County's population ranking and the South Carolina AP Co. and NENA Honorable Mention 911 Technician of the Year Certificate in two thousand four. Beyond her professional achievements, Ms. Tyndall has been a mentor, advocate, and community leader, actively serving as a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, the Greater Columbia Chapter South Carolina State University National Alumni Association, and as a foreign missionary. Ms. Tyndall is a devoted mother to her two children, Dr. Lenisha Tyndall and Nero Tyndall the Fourth, and a loving grandmother to her grandchildren Kylie and Stokely Tyndall, who bring her immense joy and pride. After forty-five years of exceptional service, Ms. Tyndall retired on February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five, leaving behind a lasting legacy of excellence, leadership, and dedication to Richland County and its residents. Now therefore be it resolved that Richland County Council members Jason Branham, Derek Pugh, Tyra Little, Paul Livingston, Allison Tereshia, Don Weaver, Gretchen Baron, Tish Dozier Aline, Jessica Mackey, Shaquise Newton, and Cheryl English recognize and commend Ms. Alphita Walters Tyndall for her extraordinary service, groundbreaking leadership, and unwavering commitment to the residents of Richland County. Now, I'm gonna have you come on down and say a few words. And we, you know, I, I haven't been here for all of your years of service. We have one colleague that probably been here over half of your years, but I haven't been here all the years. But in the time that I have been here, I greatly appreciate your smiling face and your wealth of knowledge, and I hate to see you go, and I really can't even believe that you've been here forty-five years, because you still look young, like you got another twenty years you can give us.
No, ma'am. I would be ninety-one if I waited twenty more. First of all, I want to thank God for allowing me to have the tenacity and the strength to serve Richland County, citizens of Richland County. To the honorable county council members, thank you so much. I am very touched by the, your recognition and grateful for the encouragement it brings. Thank you for acknowledging my hard work and dedication. I did not see my forty years as a job, but as a mission, a missionary, doing the work, serving our citizens. So I thank every one of my coworkers, my employees, all the municipalities that work with me, the 911 system, uh, the post office, the development community. All of them played a major role in me accomplishing our road naming and addressing, uh, programs. And I hope that I serve Richland County and I personalize my mission statement by making the safety of Richland County's citizens my number one priority, ensuring that safety is number one. Again, thank you to my family and to all the citizens, all of my internal, external coworkers and customers for your service. Thank you kindly. Bye-bye. Thank you.
Colleagues, would you like to join me, please, at the C.O. for a picture?
Everybody see me okay? Y'all are in there? Yeah, that's good. Couple more like that. Thank you.
All right. Next item is four B, uh, ratification of resolution to honor the life and legacy of Angie Stone.
So moved. Second.
A motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Um, as many are aware, uh, we lost a local legend recently, Ms. Angie Stone. Uh, her funeral service, the local funeral service was held, uh, this past Saturday in Columbia, South Carolina, uh, where, uh, county council presented the family with, uh, this resolution. And so tonight, we wanted to, uh, ratify that, um, in public, and then also I will read it aloud for the record. Resolution recognizing the life and legacy of neo-soul artist Angie Stone. Angela Laverne Brown, known as Angie Stone, was born on December eighteenth, nineteen sixty-one in Columbia, South Carolina. Angie Stone graduated from C.A. Johnson High School and began singing gospel music at First Nazareth Baptist Church, both located in Columbia, South Carolina. In the late nineteen seventies, Angie Stone joined Gwendolyn Chisholm and Cheryl Cook and formed the rap trio The Sequence and birthed their first hit in nineteen eighty, Funk You Up, which reached number fifteen on Billboard's R&B Hip-Hop Chart. Angie Stone later formed the group Vertical Hold that produced two albums and the hit singles Summertime, Seems You're Much Too Busy, and ASAP. Shortly after, Angie Stone signed with Arista Records, excuse me, Arista Records, as a solo artist and released Black Diamond in nineteen ninety-nine, which earned her two Soul Train Lady of Soul Awards. Angie Stone has released several albums, including Mahogany Soul, Stone Love, The Art of Love and War, Unexpected, Rich Girl, Dream, and she released her ninth studio album, Full Circle, in twenty nineteen. Angie was inducted into the Women's Songwriters Hall of Fame in June of twenty twenty-four. In addition to her tremendous musical talents, Angie Stone also acted in stage and film productions to include The Fighting Temptations, Pastor Brown, and the musical Chicago. Ms. Stone shared her success with her daughter Diamond and her son Michael D. Archer the Second and two grandchildren. Now the, therefore be it resolved that Richland County Council members Jason Branham, Derek Pugh, Tyra Little, Paul Livingston, Allison Tereshia, Don Weaver, Gretchen Baron, Tish Dozier Aline, Jessica Mackey, Shaquise Newton, and Cheryl English do hereby recognize and celebrate the life and accomplishments of Angie Stone, her exceptional musical talent, and her legacy of groundbreaking artistry. Next is item five, approval of minutes for our regular session, March fourth, two thousand twenty-five.
Move, Madam Chair.
Second.
A motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair. Recognize Ms. Newton.
Thank you. I don't know that there's a right opportunity, um, or best opportunity on the agenda, but I just want to take a quick moment of personal privilege and just thank all the staff who came out last week for our rezoning town hall and town hall meeting that was held on March thirteenth. Our administrator did a fantastic job as our facilitator. Our staff was there, helpful and informed as usual, and I just wanted to take a moment to appreciate their hard work. And this information is also forthcoming, but in the event that there are any of my constituents who are watching this meeting right now, there were three items that were on that agenda, and all three of those items are being deferred in some way. One item is being withdrawn altogether by the applicant, and then the other two applicants have requested to, uh, defer those items. And I only mention it here in this format because it's hard to get the word out to everybody who wasn't attending the meeting. So again, although it appears that there will be three items on the agenda for District eleven at the zoning public hearing next week, all of those items are either deferred or withdrawn. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, thank you, Ms. Newton. We're at item six, adoption of the agenda. Administrator Brown, do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
I receive no requested changes. Madam Chair.
Recognize Attorney Wright.
Uh, I would like to defer seven B to the next meeting.
And, um, our next council meeting is, yes, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Oto approve as amended. Second. Motion is second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English? Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item seven, report of the attorney for executive session items. Attorney Wright, you're recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. Uh, we have four mi- items for executive session. Seven A, public-private partnership considerations pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy A one, two, and five. Uh, next is the new seven B, discussion and legal advice concerning duties of the county administrator of pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy A one. C, property inquiry, capital projects, Columbia Place Mall pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy A two, and D, food safety case request, uh, pursuant to thirty dash four dash seventy A two. And my understanding that one of the items, seven A, does have outside counsel.
Thank you. Uh, per, uh, council rules, we take up items that involve outside counsel during our first executive session. All other items are typically taken up during our, uh, second executive session item, uh, this evening. I will entertain a go into executive session for item seven A.
Second.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Tereshia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron? Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're now in executive session. And to help manage these conservation lands as lower Richland Tourism Plan moves forward, and we try implementing that plan, we're going to start with the Conservation Land Management Open Space Strategy, and so that's a big study we'll be commissioning this year. Next slide, please. Again, with the half mill special revenue fund, as well as other funding sources, we'll continue to implement the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. I know that Commissioner Brown mentioned the workshop taking place on Thursday, but we are working with the University of South Carolina Small Business Development Center to work on the small business development stool or leg of the three-legged stool that comprises the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. So that's exciting, that's come together as quickly as it has. We also plan to implement the Forestry Stewardship Plan, which has already been approved, and that'll be a revenue generator as well. And we will be, though we haven't approved the Historic Preservation Plan yet, we do anticipate perhaps implementing parts of that in the upcoming year. Next slide, please. And ongoing projects include support for the Ag and Art Tour. We will be implementing the Heritage Tourism Marketing Plan, and that's going to be a self-guided tour of important African-American heritage sites in Richland County. We're working with DFS Creative Concepts on that, and that'll be done sometime in the spring. We anticipate completing the first Historic Preservation Plan, we're working with Ethos Preservation on that, and they've been gathering information at public input sessions. We will continue to negotiate to purchase large tracts of land, that's the other big change in our budget besides the preservation grants. We had one point six million dollars in the budget for that last year, it's two million this year, and that just depends on the particular parcels of land under consideration. The one point six million dollar project last year fell through. to use drones at each of the conservation easements annually to make sure they're in compliance. Next slide. Okay. In in, for picking both the conservation easements and lands that we would like to acquire, we rely on the green infrastructure analysis. That's one of those plans that we had commissioned, and we have six priority watersheds. I know there's only four numbers on the map there. I think the staff did that to keep me on my toes. But Myers Creek Cabin Branch is in, is the site one. Sandy Run. Yeah, Sandy Run in the northeast is site two. Site three is actually both Muscle Creek and Watery Creek, and Big Cedar Creek is site four. Okay, and we try to target those watersheds, but there's often these unanticipated opportunities that arise in other watersheds. Next slide, please. Okay, our plans for development this year, well, let's see. Using the half-mil special revenue fund as well as the general fund transfer end, we manage the county's conservation properties. That's thirty-eight hundred acres, including the Big Mill Creek and Cabin Branch properties. And we do have a plan this year to place easements on seven-hundred acres of those properties. It's basically the Cabin Branch properties, and that's one of the items that's gonna be coming before the Development and Services Committee on March twenty-fifth. And so that'll be a revenue generator because we anticipate being paid over seven-hundred thousand dollars for that land. And to help manage these conservation lands, as the Lower Richland Tourism Plan moves forward and we try implementing that plan, we're gonna start with the Conservation Land Management Open Space Strategy. And so that's a big study we'll be commissioning this year. Next slide, please. Again, with the half-mil special revenue fund as well as other funding sources, we'll continue to implement the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. I know that Commissioner Brown mentioned the workshop taking place on Thursday, but we are working with the University of South Carolina Small Business Development Center to work on the small business development stool or leg of the three-legged stool that comprises the Lower Richland Tourism Plan. So that's exciting, that's come together as quickly as it has. We also plan to implement the Forestry Stewardship Plan, which has already been approved. And that'll be a revenue generator as well. And we will be, though we haven't approved the historic preservation plan yet, we do anticipate perhaps implementing parts of that in the upcoming year. Next slide, please. And ongoing projects include support for the Ag and Art Tour. We will be implementing the Heritage Tourism Marketing Plan, and that's gonna be a self-guided tour of important African-American heritage sites in Richland County. We're working with DFS Creative Concepts on that, and that'll be done sometime in the spring. We are, we anticipate completing the first historic preservation plan. We're working with Ethos Preservation on that. And they've been gathering information at public input sessions. We will continue to negotiate to purchase large tracts of land. That's the other big change in our budget besides the preservation grants. We had one-point-six-million dollars in the budget for that last year. It's two million this year. And that just depends on the particular parcels of land under consideration. The one-point-six-million-dollar project last year fell through. Okay, and then we've actually replaced the Mill Creek Bridge, and we will be moving on toward the next phase, which should be road improvements on that tract. And next slide? That's just summarizing information about the increase in conservation grants, and the slide after that. I think the header for this should be FY twenty-four and FY twenty-five financial summaries. You can see that we tend to underspend our budget. We have had staff vacancies. We have addressed that. And then the other reflects our land acquisition projects that have fallen through. If if that money's generated from our special revenue fund, it just accumulates in our special revenue fund to be used for other projects in the future. And if it's the, if that money's from the general fund transfer end, which is the case for the unfilled staff positions generally, or, well, I mean, for our land programming planner, of course, that money just goes back into the county's general fund. And that's my report. Let's see, are there any questions?
Any questions?
I do have one question.
You recognize it, do it.
Yes, please. Thank you. You talked about the green infrastructure analyses or analysis or analyses that you're going to do. And my question is just, how closely, if at all, do you collaborate with like a planning staff and and other staff to make sure that that's shared and is a part of our evaluation process?
Let's see, when that study was first done, actually, there've been a couple different green infrastructure studies, but the first one was basically coordinated with the the county's GIS department, if I have that right, Quinton, right?
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any, this, Councilwoman Barron?
Good afternoon, and thank you for your update. And of course, one of the projects that I'm quite interested in is the one that you all started working on that links to African-American history in our county to, you know, I think the whole premise was that people would stop in Richland County on their way down to the museum in Charleston. And you mentioned that, however, I'd like to hear about, you know, how close we are to unveiling it or where we are along in the process. I know you kind of gave a high level, but do we have a timeline on that project?
Well, we had just sent a list of the final sites to the vendors, and they had already gone to work on the sites and their marketing campaign as well. We've approved their branding. And I think they initially planned May twenty-twenty-five as the date for that, and because we were a little late with some of our recommendations, it was really hard to finalize them. I think we anticipate early June twenty-twenty-five, but, yeah, but it should be soon.
And it'll be a big rollout to go along with it?
A part of the scope of work, or, there was a strong emphasis on marketing as part of the scope of work, so it should be a big rollout.
Thank you.
John, did you have anything you wanna?
Okay, yeah, okay, thanks.
Any further questions? As always, thank you for coming. We appreciate the, I'm sorry, Mr. Ratio, did you have something?
Thank you. I just wanted to have the opportunity for you to stay maybe the days of the Ag and Art Tour.
Okay, is it June sixth and seventh, John, here in Richland County? Or seventh and eighth, June seventh and eighth?
Thank you.
And thank you for coming. We appreciate the update, and I believe you were under your six minutes.
Oh, really?
Yes. Thank you.
Stumbles it off, thank you.
Administrator Brown?
The last item on the report falls under the administrator's nomination. This is an item that was requested to Richland County by Columbia International University, and in their request, they asked for the information to be sent back to them the next week, and this is that next week. But their request, I'm gonna kind of read it here. Columbia International University has requested county council support of its application to Senator Graham and Representative Clyburn for congressionally-directed funding to support science equipment needed to double the Columbia International University nursing and STEM programs. So they talked about the need for funding to do that, and they basically asked for a letter of support from the body. And the letter of support is what it sounds like. It doesn't commit anything to the university but saying that this body recognizes their request as something important and supports their request to these individuals for direct funding support. So if the body wishes to address that, we'll require an action, you know, for the drafting of that information to be representative of the county as a whole.
Thank you, Administrator Brown. Make a motion to accept and sign on in support. A motion is second. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Terracia?
Oh.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
That concludes my report, Madam Chair, members of council.
Thank you. Next is item eleven, report of the clerk of council. Madam Carrillo, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of announcements. District two is going to host a town hall meeting on March the twentieth. Documentar, the town hall meeting is gonna be from six to seven-thirty PM, and anyone who is willing to attend is welcome to attend that meeting. The next is District eight and nine will be holding a town hall meeting on March the thirty-first at North Springs Park. Again, the town hall meeting is from six to seven-thirty, and everyone in District eight or nine are welcome to attend. And on March the twenty-second, District seven is gonna be holding their annual community walk. Everyone is welcome to come, participate, put the tennis shoes on, and meet at Meadow Lake Park at nine AM. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Next is item twelve, and I'll be brief, but definitely had some happy news that I want to make sure we celebrate. All of my colleagues and their happy news, and first, I want to make sure we give a special birthday shout-out to Councilwoman Haley. I got her. She didn't know I was gonna do it. Happy birthday, and thank you for spending your birthday with us. We appreciate it. And then the next special shout-out is to Councilwoman Gretchen Barron. Yes, who recently got engaged over the weekend. So she is happily in love, and we are happy for her. Yes, yes. Alright, that concludes my happy minutes. Did I forget anything? Anybody? Okay. Next is item thirteen, open and closed public hearings. Thirteen A, authorizing the grant of an option to acquire certain real property owned by Richland County, South Carolina to Mark Anthony Brewing Incorporated, authorizing the transfer of such real property on the exercise of the option by Mark Anthony Brewing Incorporated and the satisfaction of certain conditions as set forth in the option agreement and other matters related thereto. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh, we have anyone sign up?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item.
This public hearing is now closed. Item thirteen B, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 corridor Regional Industrial Park, jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County. The execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to Killian Woods Development LLC and other related matters. This public hearing is now open. Vice Chair Pugh?
Madam Chair, no one signed up to speak for that item.
This public hearing is now closed. Next is item fourteen, approval of consent items.
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Ms. Newton?
Move to approve items fourteen A through L like Lima.
Second.
Motion is second for approval of items fourteen A through L like Lima, she said. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron? Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair?
You recognize?
Move for reconsider. Items fourteen A.
A motion is second. We have discussion. Attorney Wright, please advise.
Yes, I was just checking to make sure all of them were third readings, and they are.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
No.
Little?
Oh.
Livingston?
Oh.
Terracia?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Barron?
Oh.
Aline?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Alright, next is item fifteen, third reading items. Fifteen A, authorizing the grant of an option to acquire certain real property owned by Richland County, South Carolina to Mark Anthony Brewing Incorporated, authorizing the transfer of such real property on the exercise of the option by Mark Anthony Brewing Incorporated and the satisfaction of certain conditions as set forth in the option agreement and other matters related thereto. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item fifteen B, authorizing the expansion of the boundaries of the I-77 corridor Regional Industrial Park, jointly developed with Fairfield County to include certain property located in Richland County. The execution and delivery of a public infrastructure credit agreement to provide for public infrastructure credits to Killian Woods Development LLC and other related matters.
Madam Chair, move to approve.
Okay, a motion is second for approval. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Terracia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next, item fifteen C, an ordinance authorizing deed to the city of Columbia for water lines located at Columbia Mall, Richland County TMS number one-seven-zero-zero-one-dash-zero-four-dash-zero-two.
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Vice Chair Pugh?
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Second.
Motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Fifteen D. Ace number twenty-four-dash-zero-four-four MA, Gene Pierce. Agricultural and HM to residential, excuse me, agricultural and homestead to residential three. Fifty-one-point-fifty-two acres, fifteen-nineteen and fifteen-twenty-five Hardest Scrabble Road, TMS number R-one-four-six-zero-zero-dash-zero-three-dash-zero-dash-six-three. And R-one-four-six-zero-zero-dash-zero-three-dash-two-five. Madam Chair? You recognize, Councilwoman Barron?
This is an item that I previously spoke about, and I requested that the applicant would meet with the neighbors prior to us moving forward, and that meeting is scheduled for this week, so I'd like to defer this item until our next council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for deferral to our next council meeting. Any discussion?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Living, Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Do we need to do anything with any of these items in fifteen?
Yes, third reading items, so it would be appropriate to reconsider.
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Councilwoman?
Move to reconsider items fifteen A through C like Charlie.
Second.
Second for reconsideration of fifteen A through C. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
Oh.
Little? Livingston?
Oh.
Terracia? Weaver?
Oh.
Barron?
Oh.
Aline?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English? Newton?
Oh.
Motion approves. I mean, motion fails.
Next is item sixteen, report of Economic Development Committee. Councilman Livingston, I believe your item was discussed during our first executive session. Did you have anything else to report this evening? Thank you. Next is item seventeen. Other items, you recognize, Ms. Newton?
Move to approve items A through C.
Second. A motion is second for approval for items seventeen A through C. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Move to reconsider?
Second.
Motion is second for reconsideration of items seventeen A through C. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pugh?
Oh.
Little?
Oh.
Livingston?
Oh.
Terracia?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Barron?
Oh.
Aline?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Alright, we are now at our second executive session of the evening, which we will go back and discuss items that were under seven A that do not require outside counsel. Those would be item seven B, discussion and legal advice concerning duties of the county administrator regarding Richland County, code section two-dash-seven-nine and section two-dash-eighty pursuant to South Carolina Code of Law, section thirty-dash-four-dash-seventy-A-one. And then item seven C, property inquiry, capital projects, Clumby Place Mall. And seven D, food safety case requests pursuant to South Carolina Code of Law, section thirty-dash-four-eight-dash-seven-zero-A-two. I entertain a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second to go in executive session for the items that I read aloud. Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracia?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Now in executive session. Now in executive session.
I entertain a motion.
Both come out of executive session.
Second.
Your motion is second come out of executive session, Madam Clerk.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Is it the record reflect that we went into executive session to discuss items seven B, C, and D? And no action was taken.
Madam Chair.
Recognized, Councilman Weaver.
I have a motion when you're ready.
Whenever you are.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to authorize the Richland County Attorney to engage in potential litigation discussions related to the food safety case requests as discussed in executive session.
A motion and a second? Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, you're recognized.
Uh, to the maker of the motion, I guess. Or to anybody. Would that motion, sorry. Would that motion then just allow the county attorney to come back with further information to us to move forward? So, we're beginning discussions, yes.
Ms. Rasha, I think you've heard his motion is exactly what he just said.
Okay.
So he authorized the county attorney to move forward discussions.
Okay.
Just to clarify, Madam Chair, my, my motion was so the attorney can engage in those discussions to come back to full counsel with more discussion.
Okay, thank you for amending that entire motion. So we have an amendment to that first motion. The maker, the second, May the second, are you still keeping your second? Ms. English?
Yes.
Thank you. You've heard the amended motion and the second, any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Councilman Brannum.
So just to confirm my understanding of the motion.
Confirm the understanding of the amended motion.
Just to confirm that under this motion, the county attorney would not be retaining counsel, formally retaining counsel to enter the litigation. It would just be a conversation with potential counsel about potentially engaging in litigation. Is that right?
That's my understanding, that we were engaging in discussion, not necessarily retaining counsel at this point.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Madam Clerk.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Got one more quick. Yes.
Little? Livingston? Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion approved.
All right, we are now at item nineteen, motion period. I did not receive any motions prior to tonight's meeting. Item twenty, adjournment.
Both adjourn?
Second.
Motion is second for adjournment, Madam Clerk.
Brannum?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Livingston? Little?
Yes.
Teresha?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Meeting adjourned.